Now, this is a public hearing called by the three committees. Committee on Environment, National Services chaired by Honorable June Sakin, the Committee on Rules and Rules and Style chaired by Honorable Attorney Daniel Lau, and the Committee on Health and Society chaired by Honorable Catherine Lim. With members. Kini public hearing, among your talk, I will not allow you to react, your inputs, to the ordinance. Ordinance requiring ordinance amending sections 3, 35, 37, and 39 of ordinance number 1001-04, otherwise known as the Ecological Solid Waste Management Ordinance of Osami City, expanding the scope of the provision on littering and increasing the penalties for its violation. So, during the discussion, we will discuss the ordinance by the ordinance of littering or packaging of food. During the public hearing, we require the ordinance to be approved. The people should know, among the stakeholders, the main stakeholders. During the penalty, we will impose the packaging of the food. If possible, we will promote the ordinance. First of all, I would like to request the Secretary to acknowledge our guests and visitors who spent their very valuable time to meet us this afternoon to have this very important activity by the NGO and the public. On behalf of our city mayor, Honorable Attorney Henry Ipominal Junior, and the city mayor, Honorable Bibi Neri, and the city council, we would like to thank you for your contribution to the public hearing. But first of all, I would like to request the Secretary to acknowledge our guests and visitors who spent their very valuable time to meet us this afternoon to have this very important activity by the NGO and the public. On behalf of our city mayor, Honorable Attorney Henry Ipominal Junior, and the city mayor, Honorable Bibi Neri, and the city council, we would like to thank you for your contribution to the public hearing. This means that you are our partners, among the active members to support the community. During the public hearing, we will discuss the actions of our family, the observation of various groups, the actions of the ordinance, the actions of the authorities. During the public hearing, we will discuss the actions of the NGO, the main stakeholders, the penalties. So, at 1:30 schedule, during the first ordinance, we will discuss the anti-littering laws and regulations of the ordinance by the required support establishments or institution certificates of employees at 50%. During the public hearing, we will discuss the ordinance and introduce the following pictures. The important questions of the ordinance are the actions of the ordinance. Please, have the floor. The objectors ready. We will discuss the important features of the images. During the ordinance, we will compare them to the others. Please, use the images in the public hearing. You have the floor now, Engineer Tites, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon to the members of the various committees. Good afternoon, Osamis. Thank you for coming. It has been observed that rampant packaging of food is banned in the city of Osami. It is banned from the street, from the street, it is banned from the highway, from the parks, it is banned only from the streets. So, we find, we found the urgency to amend our city ordinance 1001-04. So, according to the ordinance, we will discuss the title. And ordinance amending sections 3, 35, 37, and 39 of ordinance number 1001-04, otherwise known as the Ecological Solid Waste Management Act of Osami City, expanding the scope of the provision on littering and increasing the penalties for its violation. So, we also saw the definition of terms, which was redefined once upon a time. This is because the increase in penalties and reinforcement of the law. So, we will discuss the definition of terms. So, definition of terms, section 3 of ordinance 1001, hereby amended to include "covered public and private places." So, according to the law, "covered" means "not covered." Refer to any place within the territorial jurisdiction of the city of Osami's which encompass any location accessible to the public or significant group of people, including but not limited to museums, clinic, health centers, dispensaries, laboratories, government and private offices, auditoriums, stadiums, gymnasiums, session halls, churches, convention centers, theaters, movie houses, studios, bars, restaurants, cocktail lounges, canteens, coasts, and other enclosed public eating places. It also includes dance halls, disco houses, enclosed public eating places, day and nightclubs, beer pub house, hotels, motels, department stores, markets, groceries, factories, and other covered venues where individuals gather for political, social, educational, religious, sports, or entertainment purpose. So, we will discuss the terms. According to the law, we will discuss the terms. According to the law, that is a private public place, but if we do it one by one, it is covered. According to the law, public place, the street, gym, covered basketball court. So, according to the law, a covered public and private place. So, if it is private, you will do it one by one, it is covered. If you do it one by one, it is covered. So, regarding litter. Litter means any garbage, rubbish, trash, refuse, waste materials, or debris, which includes but is not limited to empty beverage containers. According to the law, we will discuss the coastal bypass. Every day, we will collect the food. In the new road, we will collect the food. It is only banned from the streets. Food waste packaging. According to the law, food waste packaging. According to the law, food waste packaging. It is expensive. Each day, we collect one jar of jelly bean or any food chain products that are collected from the street. It is wasted. Other food or candy wrappers. Candy. According to the law, candy. It is used once. It is wasted. We will see it used when it is used. It is wasted. So, it is used. That is a litter. Handbills, empty cartons, boxes, or any other matter which is discarded by a person in a place except in an approved receptacle provided for that purpose or at a waste handling facility or waste disposal facility. So, regarding litter. Once again, littering. It refers to the willful or negligent act of dispersing, discarding, depositing, or permitting the release or escape of various forms of waste materials such as garbage, such as garbage, defined as a litter. Rubbish, cigarette butts, papil, plastic wrapper of bags, offensive matter, dung. So, once again, dung. Dog, cat, animals. Sinylhigan, human and animal excrement. Once again, human and animal excrement. Eaten, eaten, by the hand or by hand. Or any unclean decomposed or offensive substances which results in untidiness, messiness, and unsanitary condition within the territorial jurisdiction of the city of Osami's. Open public places. So, according to the law, private, we will discuss open public places. According to the law, open public places. Parks, bridges, rivers, canals, and other accessible areas for public use. It also encompasses the margins, banks, and rotters of bays, esteros, reservoirs, and creeks within the city, as well as beaches, shores, and public or private grounds that drain into water bodies within the city limits. So, canal, suba, we will discuss. So, section 3, once again, the prohibited acts. So, section 35 of ordinance 1001-04 is hereby amended to include depositing dirt, garbage, rubbish, offal, or any material on the street except when necessary for construction purposes as long as it does not obstruct vehicular flow. Allowing sewage, drainage, factory refuse, offensive liquids, and other materials to flow or be discharged in drinking water sources, wells, estuaries, ponds, rivers, streams, canals, harbors, estuaries, or bays within the city limit unless authorized by the city health office and the solid waste and environment management office under specific conditions that comply with ordinances and health regulations. Any resulting harm or damage shall be declared a nuisance immediately. This, take note everyone. Spitting. In short, "slurp." Depositing sputum, saliva, phlegm, or mucus on the floors of churches, schoolhouses, public buildings, places of assembly, streetcars, public conveyances, sidewalks, except in designated receptacles. So, regarding slurp, we will discuss the ordinance. Discarding dung, cat, dead animals, offal, garbage, sweepings, or any filthy, putrid, or offensive substance including the contents of previous vaults and cesspool as well as urinating or defecating in covered public and private places and open public areas. Throwing, spilling, scattering, and depositing litter on roads. According to the law, we will throw garbage on the streets. Public places or private property. According to the law, private property. We will throw it away. Including commercial and transportation facilities or public utility vehicles while being a driver or passenger during the journey to their destination. So, according to the law, prohibited acts. So, first of all, regarding the penalties. First offense, a fine of 3,000 pesos. The amount is only 300 pesos. Second offense, 4,000 pesos. We do not provide community service. First of all, we provide community service for every 100 pesos of fine. According to the law, it is a penalty. And, for the third offense, a fine of 5,000 pesos with imprisonment for a period not exceeding 30 days. So, if the violation is a corporation, firm, or other corporate entities, the penalty of imprisonment shall be imposed upon the president, manager, director, or persons responsible for its operation. Moreover, such violations constitute valid grounds for the revocation of the entity's business permit. Section 5 covers the deputation of solid waste management enforcers, and we have included here the support from the Philippine National Police, from the CTMS, and addition to our solid waste management enforcers, and per old provision of the city ordinance 1001, the sanitary inspectors of the city health office are automatically deputized to enforce. So, there goes the amendment. The efficacy of this ordinance shall take effect immediately following its posting and publication in a local newspaper in general circulation within the territorial jurisdiction of Osami City. Mr. Chairman, that is our proposed amendment for city ordinance 1001-04.
Thank you, Ambassador Tites. Thank you for introducing your amendments. So, let me know. Define littering. Once again, the waste products that are collected. It is banned from the streets. Open public places. Open public places. It is banned. So, I will discuss the penalty. According to the first offense, it is 300 pesos. The first offense is 400 pesos. The second offense is 500 pesos. We will discuss the penalty. So, I would like to say to you, the main stakeholders, the businesses, establishments, we will discuss the enforcement of the ordinance. According to the section 5, we will deputize, imprison, police, establishments, and the employees. According to the law, we will discuss the actions of the ordinance. According to the law, we will discuss the actions of the ordinance. Meaning, if we see it banned, report to the police or the employers to impose the ordinance. According to the law, we will discuss the penalty. So, during this time, I will discuss your reaction. You represent the people of Osami. You are the representative of the people of Osami. According to the law, we will discuss the actions. According to the law, we will discuss the actions. But I will discuss the actions. I will discuss the actions. According to the law, we will discuss the actions. According to the law, we will discuss the actions. So, I will discuss your reaction. Captain, the main stakeholders of the ordinance. Captain Ramadas, I will discuss the action. Captain Salih, the captain of the military. Sir, please respond. Please, I will discuss publicly.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. I am glad to be here, the official members of Osami City. So, I am glad to be here, the official members of Osami City. Chairman, I will tell you about the penalty. So, I am glad to be here, the official members of Osami City. I am glad to be here, the official members of Osami City. So, I am glad to be here, the official members of Osami City. So, I will tell you about the penalty. I am glad to be here, the official members of Osami City. Thank you, Chairman.
Please, I will discuss the actions.
The official manager, Albatira.
Thank you, sir. What are your reactions to the businesses? According to your businesses. I would like to ask you. Sir, please, Takito, please. The Philippines Chamber of Commerce is official. Sir, please.
I am President Takito Junior, trustee of the Philippine, Osamis Filipino Chamber of Commerce Incorporated. Thank you, Chairman, the officials, the captains, and the participants in the public hearing. My first question is, according to the ordinance, before 3 o'clock, I will announce my reaction to the ordinance. Amending sections 3, 35, 37, 39 of ordinance number 1001-04. There is already an ordinance in the past, 1001-04. According to the law, sections 3, 35, 37, and 39. Can it be moved before sections 3, 35, 37, 39? According to the law, the past and present proposed ordinance amendments.
Thank you, sir. Engineer Tites, please respond.
I am Attorney June. Attorney June, I do not have a copy of the old ordinance. Can you please...
According to the law, we will discuss the second one. According to the law, we will discuss the second one. The terms we will define before the proposed ordinance. Section 3, we will discuss section 35.
Hello. Terms and penalties, fines, increased.
The penalty is section 39.
Section 39. So, I do not have the copy of the old ordinance. If delayed, I will follow up my question.
I would like to have a copy of the old ordinance, 1001-04.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Attorney June. Attorney June Badong, I could also shed light, Father, sir. You have the floor, ma'am.
Yes. To answer your questions, sir, these provisions, section 3, is the definition of terms. That is why in the proposed amendment, it is stated that the ordinance number 101-04 is amended to include certain words such as those defined terms a while ago because, again, there is already an existing ordinance only that there is only one provision addressing littering. So, as said also a while ago by Engineer Tites, the main or one of the major purposes of this proposal to amend the existing ordinance on littering is to expand, to make the provision on littering clearer, and also to update the existing penalties and fines on littering. Since, as explained a while ago, the existing fine and penalty for littering is only 100, 500, and 1,000 for first, second, and third offense. And then, section 35 is about prohibited acts. So, in the existing ordinance, there are already prohibited acts designated letters A to I. And in this proposal, you have addition of J to M. And then, section 37, fines and penalties, again, on littering. As mentioned a while ago, the existing fines and penalties is, I am sorry, 300, 500, and 1,000. And in this proposal, it will be 3, 4, 3,000, 4,000, and 5,000 for first offense to third offense. And then, instead of five days imprisonment for third offense, it will be not exceeding 30 days of imprisonment. Yes. And then, section 39 is about deputation of solid waste management enforcers. In the existing ordinance, there are only two enforcers, the PNP and the employees of SWEMO. In this proposal, there will be more enforcers, the PNP, the CTMS, with the SWEMO enforcers, and of course, the sanitary inspectors of the city health office. Now, in this proposal, we did not anymore include issuance of citation ticket and apprehension procedure since these are already addressed in the existing ordinance. I hope we answered your questions, sir, first question.
Thank you, Attorney. Thank you, Attorney. According to the law, we will discuss the terms. According to the law, we will discuss the prohibited acts. First of all, it is right. It is J, K, L, M, N. So, additional acts that will be violated. Sir, please continue.
Hello. Yes. With regards to the section 39, according to the deputized, we have the following persons enumerated in the section 5. So, additional. So, sir, what if, as private citizen, if we see somebody who is doing this, throwing garbage in these prohibited places, we as private citizen, can we do the citizen's arrest?
Is there an ordinance, law, criminal offense? So, I would like to ask you, if you do it, can we arrest, arrest, and bring the police? And bring the enforcer that is deputized? Is it possible, sir?
You can do it yourself. You are not deputized, man. Are you going to do it yourself?
You can do it, citizen's arrest. But can you bring the enforcer, the police?
Turn over.
According to the law, this is a crime. According to the law, the 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 police. According to the law, the booking. According to the law, it is banned. According to the law, it is banned. Pro kasagaran din na may tabo kasagaran, kay kita madagana tamadlok, so mahi mo, tago lang ang reinforcers, ang police, ang si Mo ba nga kuwan, oh, kisapay na deputize sa balad, para safety po ka, ang wala imong worry, imong kadlok, sa ato praktikalang bang ah, pakita bo?
Ah, tinod gina, kay, lisod puning mukabangga putang mga dagko, nga ta'ho dako panato, isup panato, pero although we would like the, them to follow the law, ah, matemimo, except to maybe call the attention of the police, ah, the authorities who are deputized. Then, napakue lain question?
Pwede po sir nga, imo lamad lungon, pasaptan balad, para makuha na yang hugaw ni labay, wala tayong iprinisaw, tayong damage, no? Badlungon, para, para awareness sa publico ba nga, panalitan na yang mga dumudoong wa ika bloso balad, nga di tagadre, patagilabay, wala tayong isilang, ilan tapit, lay ordinan sa tayong anak, badlungon imo, ma'am, narabay penalty ma'am, 30,000, so, kuwan, wala'y damage sumito, pro, kung sino ka mo depost police, takpo, na na may sisa lang ngayon imo, para it will become a precedent, a precedent ba, deterrent ba sa obampod nga, patakaglabay, so, mahi mo na magkatao gamay nga deterrent sa atong mga publico nga, ah, dinasalamim mo sa maong sa laod.
Sa, kanang, you have already answered partially of my next question. My next question is, ang litter, littering is referred to the willful or negligent act of dispersing, ah, discarding, depositing, or permitting the release of or escape of various forms of waste. So, sa ato pa, kung dilim willful, pwede rata, maki, ah, muhangyo sa maong arresting officer na di manatuyo, na tugi-tuyo, or maybe, ah, dilim, kanilang, ah, yes, about that, ah, kung di manatuo willful, di po ta, basa dakpo ng po sa arresting officer or deputized officers?